... Are you, all y'all meeting our workshop order? If we got things like you ladies, so I'll go ahead and call. I guess workshop, order, Tom? Got things like ladies, that play. We're calling it, the Board of County Commissioners meeting the order. Commissioner Williams was on his way, he can join when he gets here. Y'all have to bear with me, I'm losing my voice a little bit, but I'll talk about it within, for y'all. David, are there any additions or deletions?
I've not heard of any, does the town have any additions or deletions?
Okay.
But we'll, we'll move into the agenda with work performed in Fort White, interlocal agreements. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you Chairman. Well, I'm gonna do a little speech here, because I'm happy to see all of us together. That's what we needed, we needed to all sit down here together and talk to each other. Then all the rumors are gone and we, everybody sees it. It's, it's a good thing for Ford to get together to speak about things that are going on and that's just part of, part of our jobs. And, and I know there were some things about meeting here and I, I just feel like with this, with this meeting place, each and every taxpayer, including Fort White, can watch it from their homes, you know? And I know y'all, I understand what they're saying, no hard feelings at all, but I had people in my district, what's going on in Fort White? I want them to be able to see it on, on TV, you know, and they can sit there and watch it. And I hope people in Fort White are watching it too, you know, and I'm sure they will. And, and I tell you, if you don't have it, we, we get called a lot, hey, what, your, your sound isn't working or you, you know, so, so. That's one of the reasons we wanted to have it here, but, and I also want to say Fort White, you know, I don't care about Fort White, because that's where my family came. I mean, they were, they've been there 160 years, still there, some of those I know, but it, it's a, it's a wonderful place, got a great history and, and really is the gateway to the river and everything else. Everybody goes through, through, through Fort White. And I'll tell you the truth, I learned a lot the last few months and I think I speak for all the commissioners with the, we're thankful you're here and, and um. I honestly saw the town as part of the county, like, I didn't really, and I know this is ignorance on my part, but I said, you know, they're the county, really. And then I realized that y'all are, and I, I knew it, I just didn't really, you know, know it for sure that y'all are just like a city or a municipality. And, and I get that, 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 you know, the county does a bunch of work down there and I think the work record reflects that. And it's things that y'all need and I don't think anybody in the county has a problem and I think that their county taxpayer is just like everybody else, you know? And, and I get the independence, I heard, I had somebody in Fort White tell me that they don't want to lose their independence. I, I don't either, because their history, Fort White's history, it, it is a good one, you know? And they were actually a pretty big place back in the day, you know, you had Joan Conceble and everything else, I mean, it was, it was a pretty thriving place. So, and I know Mr. Kirby wants to talk to you about interlocals and all the other things that y'all want and what you don't want. And I'm here to say that I want to go through them all, the utility, whether you want to do that or not, all that is up to you. If, if y'all have something that we do down there at the county, or down in Fort White, you don't want us to do, we don't have a problem not doing it. If y'all say we don't want that done and we want this done, the things you want and the things you don't want, we have no problem. It, it's just, you know, if you have an issue with something you don't want us to do, that's up to you, it's up to you, it's, that's y'all's decision. You can say yes or no, and, and, and I understand that there's been a lot of talk all through, all over the place, but really and truly, we just want to do what y'all want to do. You know, if y'all decide you don't want something we're doing, then we don't do it, you know, we just won't, because we're not going to force anything on you. And y'all aren't going to force anything on us, so, so I think Mr. Kirby has some things to say, that he needs to, you know, he's like a few things that when you talk about getting interlocals on. And also, what, whatever y'all think about the utility and that's your decision too. No, no, you know, there is no force of anybody doing anything here. This, this is just a good meeting, we're all together and we can be, be honest and forthright with everybody, you know? I appreciate it.
Okay, good evening, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Oliver to share. I've always just looked at it as part of the town, but obviously, that's not true. With that being said, we're going to get into some interlocals here in a little bit, but I'm of the opinion that we need to talk about some things we don't have. And as Mr. Oliver said, not like entire Board of County Commissioners agrees, we have no problem doing everything that we've always done. So, kind of touch on it. We can kind of start with landfill records, we did a 10 year history, there were roughly 660 four corners. And we got everything from, you know, mosquito spraying, dead animal pickup, pools, deters, tree pickups. Facility side, about 1365, asphalt repair department, communication, concrete electrical, general maintenance, out of steam, kind of floral, cleaning, plumbing, security surveillance. On the public works side, around 900, there's only about 3,000, over 10 years. So, you know, for example, you have about four dirt roads in Fort White, a total of a ton of a mile. We've got to grade them a couple times a month. We do not have interlocals for that kind of stuff, we do not have interlocals for various things I just mentioned. But if we're going through this process here tonight, I think that was most significant by sign of my having a meeting, is I'm prepared for attention pause. Back in the day, we didn't do a real good job distinguishing private laws versus public laws. Well, at some point it came to our attention, along with our product, we immediately ceased work on that, because it's no different than a private property. So, based on what we've kind of stumbled upon, and I will, exactly what Commissioner Oliver said, I never thought anything about it. And now the question, I personally, I think I could speak to this whole board, we don't have a problem at all, but I do think we need to clean up some paperwork. That's that for current.
I guess what we're asking is, what is your expectations of the county in terms of this type of work? What would you like to perform, what do you want us to know?
Really, I wasn't prepared to answer that, I thought it was to discuss the work, the interlocal we have in place.
Right, we are.
I don't think we have a problem with any of the interlocal agreements.
The only problem we had, I guess, was the last meeting that was said that if we don't show up for the next meeting, I guess we, we wouldn't have the interlocal.
Mr. Mayor, for clarification, what I'm referring to is this, these are not covered under interlocal.
They're not, I understand. When you say you want us to perform these services, can we get the two attorneys to work together, creating an interlocal to cover these services? If you're asking for direction, I would have a problem. You know, Ronnie, Ronnie, probably the best thing to say is what y'all don't want us to do, I think that's more of a, probably a larger number than what you do. You know what I mean, you, you want us to do a lot more than you don't want us to do, I believe you, maybe not, I don't know, but.
I wasn't aware of any we've done, done.
Oh, I didn't. That's us asking you.
Kevin's saying is none of this is covered under interlocal, understanding now is if you want us to work in the town, we need it, and that's a legal thing. So, we need legal advice.
In the map, if we go to City Lake City, we have four interlocal. And these things are not covered under our current interlocal program.
I mean, so you're saying that the grading is the, is not covered?
Ninety percent of all of it is not covered. You have seven interlocals, and 90% of the work I just mentioned is not covered.
But now, you, you mentioned ice machine. Where is ice, what, what, I mean, we need that covered?
There, there's some co-mingling in there with, you know, here we go again, you got the library, you got the community center.
Right. That, that's, yeah, I don't want to get, I didn't come here to argue, so I promise. But I, we went through a lot of work, and we found that a lot of, out of 100 work orders that, that, what I called, I did the public search on. We found five out of that whole hundred that was not pertaining to the town of Fort White, everything else was pretty much on the library, the community center of that name. And that was, that was a research that I got back from January to, but regardless of that, if you need an interlocal to perform something, I mean, we're here to, we've got.
Clarification first, we drew a circle around the town of Fort White, we captured any work order, a complete smaller portion of them. It was anything done within the town of Fort White, inclusive of.
Yeah, I have no problem with this.
We do not have a, a spray mosquitoes, we do not have an interlocal. I mean, you know, there's, there's no such a hatch in that one area, really.
Now, this, there again, Mr. Kirby, so we're all clear, the, the mosquito spray, that's state funded, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not, you're not providing a free service to Fort White, it is provided through a state funding.
The easiest way, the way I understand it, is without an interlocal, it is no different than a private property.
I understand what you're asking for, but I just, I watched the last meeting because I was out of town, and I tried to let everybody know I was out of town and I couldn't be here. So, I watched the last meeting, I think everybody left this meeting under the impression that Lake City does a lot of free stuff for Fort White. And what y'all do, do, we appreciate guys, okay, I, I'm here to tell you thank you. I know I had a conversation with one of the commissioners way back, and I said, what and why? And I, and I feel like the, the turning point of this whole, everybody getting upset with what I put in a public records request, to see what we had done. Or what they, what Lake City had provided to Fort White, because I kept getting the resistance thrown at me going, well, we do so much for Fort White for free, and I'm going, what? And nobody could ever answer that question, it always give me one item, I'm like, okay, well, what all did, I wanted to see what they all done, it's like, maybe y'all do do a lot down there. So, when it came back, me and Ms. Connie took the time to research it, and out of all that, and like you said, I'm sure you drew a circle around Fort White, it didn't matter what it was, we were in Fort White. Correct, I get that, what the public and what some of the commissioners need to understand, because I got word back today that some commissioner wouldn't quite understanding that a lot of the stuff that y'all do down there too is grant funded. Well, we pay for traffic signals for white rights check, we pay for, but it's not free work. So, but what you do do, we appreciate y'all, guys, we're not, we're not trying, we never, we didn't bring this up, we didn't come to y'all and go, why don't y'all do more for Fort White? We appreciate everything, we understand that y'all are the bigger person here, okay? Before I become mayor in Fort White, how many interlocals did y'all have? Now, you had no interlocals in Fort White before I came here.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, that was it.
You had none, okay? I've been in business for a while now, I understand business, okay? I understand that y'all are the bigger person, and I knew at Fort White was everyone to get better, we better Fort White, we needed to try to theme up, bigger dollar, okay? That was direction, that's why we got the interlocals that we've got today, we were working that direction to, to put all this into play. While we're sitting here tonight, I really, I've asked myself all the way here, driving here, I don't have, I don't have a meeting with y'all. But I feel like somewhere in this thing turned, and now it's, it's, and I know that you couldn't have, in the last meeting asked the question. Are y'all the authority over, are y'all intermingling the authority with the interlocal? And that's, and that question never got answered.
That authority is up to y'all.
Right. Got, got, y'all want to do it, so, there's no force in y'all to do any. Okay, let me, let me say one more thing, we appreciate y'all, okay? I don't know what picture you've got painted of Fort White, the board or whatever, we want to work with y'all. Okay, we, I, I'm not going to, I'm not telling the center to, the water authority thinks a great idea, we need to discuss it some more on our end of it. We want, we want y'all to do our locals, okay? We want y'all to do the work that you're doing in Fort White, I, I don't, we, we talked about it at the council meeting. So, so it sounds like, I guess this is an issue where they need to get the lawyers, need, or who, we need to get those, the things we don't have interlocals on, send them to y'all, get it a local? And then that's over, that's done, and we have interlocals on a lot of stuff, so that's this.
A clear example, we're now suddenly in the animal enforcement business. Right. We have no interlocal with the town of Fort White, provide that service for what now in the town of Fort White?
We, we just started a new county business. So, that'd be something I'm sure that y'all, we don't know, in the city of Lake City, they have their own contract with the Humane Society.
Providing that service in Fort White, but we really don't have any legal authority to do that.
Right. It's really just cleaning it up. Don't you say that?
It's just cleaning it up. You can, like the city, have your own agreement with the Humane Society, separate from us, or, you know, we can enter into an interlocal, that's really your call.
So, y'all are saying that we need an interlocal, no matter whether, whether it's paid for or free service? Yes, we got to have an interlocal agreement with the county.
Yes, sir.
For y'all to do any services in public.
That came to our attention, probably about six months ago.
Well, I've been raising the red flag about there no, not an interlocal in place for the water line coming down, and yet we've spent a million dollars towards it.
We don't have an interlocal, what are you telling me?
We can do that.
Well, I mean, if you're going to talk about interlocals, that's another example.
We need, everybody needs to pitch in and say, we don't have one for this, and we'll get them all, and this is easy. Right.
Now that everybody comes to everybody's attention, that we got to have an interlocal with y'all, everything you do, whether it's free service or paid for.
Clearly, I don't stand up for lawsuits. And it's not the, neither.
If you came back to she raised the. Lawyers can write it. And it could be a very common.
I mean, it, it's not the same as a private business, because before our residents pay county taxes, I say that's what the difference is. Well, like, I'm just saying, I don't think it's the same as a private business.
I'll give you the easiest example, many years ago, we have several roads that are in the city and county. It becomes so complex, where we stop paving, whose is it? We formed an interlocal agreement with the city of Lake City, we're considered a complete city road. Because there was always arguing back then, you stop at the city level sign and repaint a road, and whose responsibility is that, structure, like that.
Okay.
We just never thought about that.
We have a site here in the city of Lake City that says if there's an accident or anything that happens on US 90, jurisdiction. Because city limit lines are so confusing, something would happen and nobody would know who was supposed to respond. Reaching an interlocal agreement to say, if anything happens from right of way line to right of way line, this is who responds. It just makes it easier in the future, follow up on.
It's a big handed difference, if it's residents of the city of Fort White pay ever more taxes or not. You've got to have an interlocal to, to work together, it's just cleaner that way.
And it, and it sets down what you're going to do and what you're not going to do, and then if we find out there's something we need to do, we'll have another interlocal. You know, I don't think we've had a problem signing any interlocals as been put in place. All right, we wrote and signed the interlocal and things moved, so, I think we're good. So, at this point, it's direction, just, just give the attorney's direction to go ahead and move forward with, on the interlocals that we don't have in place?
Between you guys, we're just staff.
We need a motion. We need a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
I move that we give direction to our, well, I move that we, it's kind of hard to word it, move that we let the town of Fort White know what interlocals we need. That we don't have, and whatever else we've got in question and they can, our attorneys can get together and I'm sure they'll, there might be something we're missing, you know? I'm sure there's something, anyhow, I move that we approve the attorneys to get together and get on the interlocals along with Mr. Kirby.
A motion and a second, any more discussion?
Okay, so we currently have seven interlocal agreements and one proposed agreement. The easiest one to start with is code enforcement services. We have heard that you're not happy with the code enforcement services you provide, so our question is.
Whoever is.
Yeah.
Whoever is happy with code enforcement.
You still want us to provide no services, or you want us to end that?
I mean, I say yes, I mean, to shorten the meeting. I mean, I say yes, I mean, to shorten the meeting, we went out here all night, but I say, yeah, I mean.
I don't have no problem.
None of it, except for, like I said, and if we ever decide to do something, I don't like code enforcement or something, which we've been talking about. We can come to y'all and say, hey, let's go ahead and we've taken that over. So, I mean, I think.
Is there any treaty agreements you want to see?
Man, I wasn't here for that. We signed that. We signed all them. It's complaint driven. Just don't ride around and say, okay, there's a old house right there that need to be tearing down. Once somebody complains, then that triggers then, uh, response from the code enforcement.
Uh, we, that's the good thing about code enforcement. It's another taxpayer collar more taxpayer, you know? And for us just riding around looking for something wrong, that, that, you, you, that ain't good. That wouldn't be good.
Well, the animal thing, I like.
Wrong animals. So, a lot. It is, and I ain't bragging. We'll say this board right here has still. A animal enforcement wing that's as good as anything we ever did.
Good.
Of course I did.
Like, I'm looking up there, am I paying it right to North Street? Street is not up there. Okay? So like F T offer, example, I'm talking about interlocals. They called me this week. NFPS, you know, not, maybe everybody doesn't understand that work is grant funded jobs. So we front the money upfront and then we're reimbursed. So like, D O T called me and said NFPS is going to decide. They asked me if I'm going to do the C E I. The reason they asked the question, I forget the grand amount of that call. Five hundred thousand, Connie? North Street? Five fifty five maybe? No, five hundred. But like on the C E I side of things, once you get an imloke, if I do, like we've always done it, you already done it. Looking at about ten percent of the project and do the C E I side of things. That's the significance of the.
That's construction inspections.
Those are the top things.
To make sure they do it right.
Those are the top things that sort of corporate. I don't have.
I have no, if y'all have a problem with that. No, so, yeah. We just need.
Get them to rough it down.
No, no, he's talking about the second one. We have an interlocal agreement for planning services that you were going to contract with us to do planning and it never happened. So, I mean, we would say if it's not going to happen, we should terminate that interlocal agreement.
It's not hurting anything.
A backup. Given it hurt, it's there. I mean, we are, we have already another planner, but if that, that, we can keep that in place just in case down the road, we might need to utilize, you know, Columbia County. We don't know it's there, but we can do away with it and renegotiate it one if, if it's in need.
Oh, I have an interlocal here on George that was approved by the Fort White Town Council on April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, and it was sent in for y'all's signature.
If you can give me a copy, I'll put it on the agenda for Thursday. We even approved it, I guess, at our end and then.
Ronnie, you said, well, on the planning services, y'all doing what with? No, I'm saying, we've already had, we have a plan that, that we utilize. So we don't, we wouldn't leave that. If y'all wanted to leave it alone, I mean, leave it there in case we ever had to fall back on, you know.
We say y'all pay for that service. I've already said the North Florida Regional Planning.
No, we're doing Z D A.
Z D A.
So, so what about the garbage contract? We leaving that? Because I was understanding y'all aren't happy with it.
Well, we're not happy because the way, we wasn't involved, and I understand that from a, a aspect of you get too many people talking to the same person, things get messed up. But when we, we made it very evident that with, with Mr. Kraus, I, I never spoke with Mr. Kirby. I don't know where he, if he got any information, or if he's getting from Ms. Connie. Ms. Kraus then going into it, we needed franchise fees on commercial accounts. We were very adamant about that. So after the deal got cut, which we were not a part of, then it came back to us. We, we, for months, we, Ms. Connie, we called me, and we had, still haven't received our franchise fees, still haven't received our franchise fees. So finally, I made a call to Mr. Kraus, and he said, we needed to get, he needed to get with somebody who'll get back with Ms. Connie, where, I'll come and find out, there isn't franchise fees. And we don't know how the deal got, I mean, we were very adamant when y'all cut the deal that we needed franchise fees, because that was part of our.
Didn't y'all have a consultant working on that at that time with y'all?
That was for, that was for putting, it's always the work things, but it's with.
No, that's what Dale.
Dale, where are we going with y'all?
Not have the alarm taxes that.
No, no, the garbage.
Garbage one too.
Should call.
And if something to get, to get the confusion straightened out, our thought was, we were just a passer.
Yeah.
At Waste, you were going to tiki back onto our contract.
We, we wasn't involved. I mean, we were told to stay out of it. Don't call Dana, don't call nobody, stay out of it. Let, let us handle it. And so we were utilizing through y'all to get to them, but we kind of laid out a formula, what we needed, what we were expecting. And it never came back that way. It came back, we, and even after it was done, we went several months into the contract with you, and we still thought we had franchise fees. Several months after it all got done, several months, what, four, five, six months down the road, we found out there's no franchise fees on the you didn't even know it. Because when I would discuss it with you, you would tell me, oh, yeah, well, you need to get with such and such, or I'll call such and such, and I'll get them with, so everybody is soon.
Right, because we were just going to be a passer. We were just going to collect the money from Waste Pro and give it to you. We wouldn't set your franchise fee, we wouldn't establish your franchise fees. We were just a passer.
We were, we were, we were operating under the contract that you have with Waste Pro. And you know, how it was understood when we signed the interlocal agreement, that Waste Pro was going to bill the commercial customers direct, the commercial customers were going to pay Waste Pro direct. Waste Pro was going to cut one check to the county for all franchise fees, and the county would then split out what would come to the town of Fort White.
Right, just pass through whatever Waste Pro collected based on your fee schedule.
That's correct.
That's what we said.
One correction. We have a printout here that we received from Pam Davis at the landfill. And she does show some franchise fees being collected on here. But in the contract with the Waste Pro people, it says the collector will pay twelve percent net revenue from commercial billings under this agreement. But no, there are no franchise fees on here whatsoever for commercial carts. And commercial carts are over half of what our commercial customers are in the town of Fort White. And we were not prepared for that. When we thought we were going to get commercial franchise fees, we thought it was going to be on every commercial account. And then later on, when I get this spreadsheet and there's nothing on there, I'm questioning it, and I'm told that there are no franchise fees on commercial cans.
Just a fourteen, I think, was going. Broke me the other day for what, are y'all going to charge, uh, a collection fee for businesses that have commercial accounts for their, on their property tax also?
No.
What do you mean a collection fee?
You know, the assessment, garbage assessment is on property tax.
No. Residential one.
So.
Well.
So if you're going to charge for commercial carts, that's got to get transmitted to us and to Waste Pro, so they can charge for that.
What are you referring to?
Call commercial carts.
Is the same size as residential, uh, big container that's on wheels that you just.
That, that's the reason it's not working. We do not, we do not do that. Our container.
Yeah.
Well, it, it doesn't define that in the contract. It just says commercial billings. That's why the misunderstanding is because in the, in the Waste Pro contract with the county, which is what we were operating under through you, it just says commercial billings.
Because we don't do commercial carts.
Right.
That's reason not applicable. As David indicated, it's a pass through.
Well, it says in here, commercial handheld service is a maximum of two ninety-six gallon carts can be used for, for commercial handheld can load service.
I think everything for what, there's nothing.
No.
In the town.
Confused.
If I were confused, because I don't have that fee.
There's about twenty-six of them. We did.
We don't have them.
It's referenced in the contract, so we didn't know you didn't have it, because it's referenced in the contract with Waste Pro.
Remember, I asked you, we're cutting deals, do I need to be there? Do I need to be involved? Ms. Connie need to be there. You let us handle this, because I get it. I mean, you don't want too many people talking to them. You get it all confused. And that was right behind, when y'all started negotiating that new contract, was right behind them talking about going up on everybody's property. That's why y'all started negotiating. So y'all didn't want to get too many people talking to them, because they was already trying to fight the battle of them raising prices. Prices down, and I don't think y'all wanted to get where, got to get the lady confused.
But if we don't charge that fee, we don't know true charge. If it's in the contract with Waste Pro, we can certainly burn it out. When Claudia started raising the issues of money's not making sense, we directed her to meet with Pam Davis at the landfill, who runs the landfill and who works with the contract with Waste Pro.
And we can't, as I said, we can't talk to her. So we're kind of like, we're going to y'all to talk to them, and so we're, yeah.
Pam, and when I did mention to Pam about it, she indicated to me that she really knew nothing about it. That this was kind of dumped on her at the eleventh hour. And so I didn't pursue it any further with her.
When is our contract at the Waste Pro?
I need to make sure it's.
I mean, it's basically speaking, it's pretty well the balls and Waste Pro's.
If it's in the Waste Pro contract, we can go to Waste Pro and have.
I mean, I don't understand what Connie's saying about the twelve percent in the contract. I, I, I understand that wholeheartedly. And my assumption of it, you know, because I knew there was a franchise fee on it, I never once considered these little two run around carts. And, you know, I never agreed to that in the contract, that we didn't, Columbia County, you're never going to do that to a commercial person. You know, you pay for the dumpster, you pay for your roll off.
So I think that's where it's, it's light usage commercial, like.
You get a free child fee off the dump.
Yeah. Well, no, we haven't been paid anything.
Before we did, we haven't been paid anything since we.
And Pam figures bill was Fort White versus not Fort White. Just the past.
Uh, for commercial handheld, and it's seventeen seventy-nine per week.
I just thought maybe we'll, we get the doctor. The doctors roll.
My sound be right, what's happening here is that on the commercial rate, Waste Pro is charging for it under.
You are correct.
And then, but the money hasn't been distributed to Fort White for the, for the.
Somebody was going to meet with Pam, figure out how much money we needed to write the check for White.
And that's where the discrepancy came with the franchise fees for the commercial cans versus not.
Is Pam going to meet with you though? Will she meet with you?
They haven't met.
We have, we've talked on the telephone, which she sent me this, this sheet, but we don't, but there's still the issue of the no franchise fees on the commercial.
So Pam was looking for what accounts are yours that they're charging for, so she could separate it out from their full bill.
Right.
Again, all we're supposed to be is a passer. We're not collecting fee on it, we're not adding anything here. Whatever Waste Pro charges, you guys, you give it to us and we give it to you. You're just a passer. And this was apparently, and we didn't know that was being charged.
But is Waste Pro charging twelve percent on the roll around cans?
My knowledge, no.
Okay, that, that's the first question that we answered.
This is, this hit me cold now. I don't. I've never heard about the cart business.
Hit them way.
Figure that out.
They do, even still, unless they're rolling all the big cans.
Yeah.
When we were on ninety, we paid Waste Pro for cart.
For recall, we had a big issue with the franchise.
We sure did. Yeah.
Basically, we had all kinds of. We, we understand there can be discrepancies with franchise.
And I think they didn't even know, you know, they, they didn't know it's happening either. So it was like a big mix of franchise fees. Complicated.
But I'll, I'll, I'll get into, this is going to be colder than that.
So, I guess what I'm hearing is y'all want to continue with the county as far as, you know, interlocal agreement?
Having a problem. I mean, as of now, we, I said, if code enforcement comes up and we decide that's something we want to take over, we can approach y'all at the time and say, we, I'd take this back over, and just take this off y'all plate and we'll take it back over.
Appreciate y'all.
That's the way to do it.
I do, I do think we should clarify, though, the difference, like, there's been some conversations and some misunderstanding as to why the town of Fort White is charging a little over a hundred dollars more a year for garbage than Columbia County. And the reason being is because we pay the county the tipage fees of two hundred dollars per household. Y'all are only charging your people a hundred ninety-six dollars, but we're paying two hundred to you for the tipage fees. In addition to that, we have to pay for our attorney's fees, we have to pay for advertising, our mail outs, admin fees, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why the additional hundred dollars got added on. It's not that we were trying to gouge anybody or pay anybody's salary or anything like that. It was just to cover our expenses.
Two hundred dollars is to go to Waste Pro, because that's basically what they charge the county.
We're charging, what we charging?
Three fifteen.
Yeah, three fifteen. So, but you have fees in there that you've got to pay out. All the fees add up. So, as you know, so that's where that fee difference comes in. Yes, we're trying to drop it, but what we tried to drop it this year, remember you called us and said, hey, we got word that Waste Pro's fixing to go up. So we had to hold tight on our fees, and we didn't know if it's going to go over our, what we're paying out.
Right, we didn't know.
What you saying in this contract? Waste Pro approached the county and said, we want to raise our rates. Actually, did a presentation in the board, and the board did not. We was like, well, we don't have to charge enough now, is it?
Attorney's office gave us a deadline that we had to send out notices to all the, uh, residents in Fort White, letting them know what the proposed rates would be. And so we upped it to include that forty percent. And then when it came back and y'all said no, we dropped it back down to where it was before.
Bet you got some phone calls.
Oh, yeah.
Very good with Waste, Waste Pro.
I don't hear anything.
But for clarification purposes, the reason we didn't want to open that up, we built up, we had a standing contract. That was not the time to renegotiate a contract. If you start changing any line items, you open the door for change of all.
They're able to.
Trying to add any money on to whatever Waste Pro charges us before we send it to you. We just want to be a passer. That was so that you can rely on the cost that we get, that we pay, and give Waste Pro efficiencies and not having to stop, drive to the landfill, empty the cart, come to Fort White, collect Fort White, stop, drive to the landfill, empty the truck, and then come back and finish working. They have to do it more efficiently, therefore keep the rates lower.
David, when we dropped the, uh, when we waived the garbage fee during the, uh, during COVID. Do you have to give so much time or anything to, because I know we just voted on to waive that garbage fee, but we could have waived ten percent of it, fifteen or twenty percent. So, then you could, can't you really waive that fee at about any time you want to?
Well, we waived the fee to the citizens, but we paid the fee four double.
Yeah, I'm just saying, though, if you wanted to lower the fee, you could lower it at whatever income you wanted to, but.
Right. The object is of charging taxpayers, you don't make a break anything.
But ultimately, the rate we charge is the way we're negotiating the contract and the board approves. But ultimately, the rate we charge is the way we're negotiating the contract and the board approves.
I understand that. I'm just saying, though. I'm probably the, we couldn't lower it at that point. Hadn't we lowered it? I mean, we we.
Voted.
We we voted.
Exactly.
We voted.
We still pay for it. Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, though, we should have waived fifty percent of it or twenty.
Yo.
Yeah, y'all, you don't have enough.
I'm just saying.
Enough garbage to do it.
The one I'm saying is you could waive fifty dollars of it. You know. You see, what I'm saying, y'all couldn't do it because we said it was fixing to go up. You can do it now if you. The, you know. Yeah. But if we don't offer you anything, though.
They got to make the difference. Still, you got to make it up, Rocky.
But there's pieces, it's two hundred dollars.
The fee in the car.
Right, I don't know what's what our expenses come up to this.
Three fifteen dollars per household.
Oh, okay.
No, it's talking for a lot, three hundred fifteen dollars.
And two hundred dollars for the for the tipage fee and all the other fees that's involved.
A hundred. Hundred.
I had a hundred dollars. It's good until September thirtieth of twenty sixth. You're right, by year now.
And so what what?
Real quick, how was your goal?
What's the expenses?
I said if it was any different, because you made the comment that we were gouging our students.
No, I'm just saying that I was, you said you was gonna lower, but you did.
If we, no, I'm saying if we if we could have lowered it, but then when I got with Miss Connie, Miss Connie, I said, because I thought the difference after you made that comment, I went and said. You know, we had pricing, me and her got together the year before, since we're gonna get into this. And when we first initially did this, we were putting it on the taxes. Our our was collected. Well, monthly through when they paid the water. Well, some people was escaping. They they were putting their trash out there and getting picked up, but we wouldn't get it. So anyway, like, long story short, we said, solve this. Board voted to move forward, put it on the taxes. So there's a fee for doing all that. So when she came to me and we priced it all out. I remember mine, your conversation, I thought was that it'll be this much for the residents the first year, but then we can drop it back down. Now, I don't know the prices, guys. I don't know where where we went from there. So that's what I meant.
No, I was just answering the question.
That's no.
No, you said David said it was gonna go up, so y'all didn't lower.
Right, right. And I thought we were going to lower it that second year. I thought that's what our mindset was, but after, I mean, she did her. We're we're right at three fifteen right now.
And I was just, I know we weighed. The budget one year. So I was just, I I'll be in my mind, I think, well, if you was gonna lower, you might lower it now.
See, I thought you had to wait. I thought it was about yearly, but I thought.
Yeah, modify.
Well, the tax assessment. Right, I didn't know exactly the process, but.
You send a tax rate once a year.
So how did y'all change yours?
We didn't change. We just adopted the. Collect it.
So you just paid it for. People sometimes think that trash is a tax. It's not. It's just middle of the year. You gotta wait.
And go to the property appraiser, or not, I mean, the tax collector and say, do not bill our customers for this assessment. And we had to make up these assessment orders if.
We made it up.
On that year when you got your. There was no trash collection charges on your tax bill.
Right.
Because the board waived it. I'm saying that we missed that timeframe when we started in.
Johnny wanted to install it. They all thought we. Two hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you, that notice, I send them. It always be the same thing. We are being crazy when they say it. It looks like it's going up two hundred and fifty dollars or two hundred dollars, when it really is just. You know, it's a bad, it's a bad, and I think we talked about trying to change it, but the state has their own form and they will.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
Right.
Stay law.
You tied a hundred dollar fee, I'm sure Kyle charged in the city of Fort White a percentage, and that's one of the costs.
Yeah, I don't have fees in front of me, but I know that we talked about what came up.
So then we have two utility authorities, one for water and one for Waste Pro. And we've heard all kinds of rumors about the town's interest in continuing or not continuing those agreements. So you put that back? And then, again, the proposed one is for the Inter Tuttony Utility Authority. And, you know, we're just seeking direction.
I mean. I'm speaking for myself, guys, but I still say that we need the inter locals like they are. And, you know, when, as far as the inter water utility authority, you know, I think it's a great thing. We still need to talk about it. A lot of, you know, risk on our side, too. I mean, you know, if we do decide to do this. I know financially, y'all were y'all were carrying the burden of it all. But, you know, as far as Fort White goes, and that's why I kind of wanted to have the meeting in Fort White, so that some of the residents could get up and speak and get some of their their thoughts on. We're signing over, as y'all know, we'll be signing over our water, water, I mean, pretty much. Everything.
We will be.
And we will.
And I know y'all will.
I know.
I know everybody signs it over.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's just, that's, you know, so I, it needs to be.
It's there.
It is.
It is.
We have Grady on the.
I mean, when you get there.
Are we, are we, you know, are we into the?
Before we did it, the inter water utility, let's uh, let's have Grady do the presentation. Yeah.
Still there, Grady?
Grady, are you on the phone?
I am here.
Okay. If you want to, if you want to get started, you can start at any time. The people know who's Grady is. Okay, Grady, Grady. I don't make Grady. Grady is the attorney that had, well, him and Doc worked together, but they have written up this uh. The utility agreement for the. For the town and the uh, and county, so he's a lawyer that's, I'm thinking all of it, and he's done, he's done several of these. Uh, utilities in the park. Okay, Grady, go ahead.
Yeah, so uh, what what's on the table, so to speak, is a proposed interlocal agreement between the town and the county. If agreed to, a new independent authority would be created by virtue of the interlocal agreement. Now, that is specifically authorized uh for us to do by virtue of the statute, so one sixty three point oh one, section seven. This has been done before in the state of Florida, and it's been done in different ways for different needs, for different communities and regions. Um, probably the closest, and I apologize, I'm at the bottom of of hotel in the most magical part of our whole world. Disney World, okay, and it's kind of annoying to hear, but I apologize, I had to step out of the room and need to start this one. Um, but the idea is that the authority would be run by a board. And the board would be appointed by both the town and the county. So there would be representation by both of the bodies who are agreeing to form this new legal entity. Now, my primary experience is not going around the state starting these. My primary experience in this area has been working for Clay County Utility Authority. This is any uh, what we call an independent special business in nineteen ninety four. And and we are in Clay County, Brad, the county and uh, uh, Duvall, but the emphasis on Clay. Um. But what we are talking about as opposed to going to the state legislature for authorization and creation, we're talking about agreeing. Among ourselves to create this facility or. Now, what would it look like? And and the way I I think about it, I think about it like, you know, what if I bought a new car? What if I bought a new house? What if I bought a new office building? What would that look like? To me, there's going to be a transition that's gonna take place here. Okay, and the Inter Tuttony Water Utility Authority would phase in. And the parties in agreement have to agree, hey, this is gonna be our live day. You know, we're gonna be, if you will, in beta testing for a certain point, but then we're gonna have to phase in and become operational and legally effective. Now, to my way of thinking, that's gonna be October one uh, twenty twenty four. Now, you know, everybody's got to weigh in on this and agrees on what we're going to do, but to my way of thinking. We need smart people with sharp pencils, computers at work, doing performance on what the operation look like. What the service looks like, what the collection looks like, what the maintenance looks like, what the equipment looks like, what the inventory looks like, what the rates look like, what the charging look like, all down the line. I I know that many of you participated in or saw on the YouTube presentation, the presentation by Mr. Roach of uh, North Florida Professional Group. Uh, last time, and and you know, Mr. Roach is is a pretty sophisticated fellow. He's coming at this from the standpoint of the former CFO of JEA, of Jacksonville area. Um, it's one thing to say, this is what in a perfect world would be done. It's another thing to say. Under our circumstances, really being, if you will, a startup as a new authority together, you know, a collaborative effort to bring the two of us. You know, this is the way we have to do it, based on our budget, based on our community needs. So to my way of thinking, hopefully, taking a positive step and action steps that will address current needs. Related to water supply and related to sanitary sewer needs. Our communities, your bodies, need to say, yes, we are going to pitch in, we are going to build this together, we are going to make this work for the betterment. Of our community, which includes County Fort White, which includes our county, uh, not necessarily part of today's immediate discussion. But um, you know. He he was somewhat a controversial figure, but Andrew Kissinger Dodd, at age one hundred, he was fond of quoting the poet. You know, if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there. I think we need to look down that road, and I think we need to say, where are we going? Okay, and I could see a regional utility that includes. A lot of input from the town of Fort White, a lot of input from Columbia County, and a lot of input from neighboring towns. And, you know, we're not an island unto ourselves. We are part of the state of Florida. I'm talking to you, Dave, from Orlando. I'm normally practicing in northeast Florida. I could tell you what happens that that affects the Swinney Water Management District is of great interest to buy utility, and we have to deal with that on a regular basis all the time. Um, so what what happens to you there in north central Florida, you know, it it affects everybody in the state. And I could also tell you from my experience, closing down thirty years now, it's not getting any less expensive to be in the utility business. For here, you're a governmental home utility, which is what we're proposing here. This would not be a for-profit private entity. This would be for the public, okay? You should, you gentlemen, you ladies would be part of getting this started for the betterment of our community, for the betterment of our town. Um, I don't have a dog in the fight, okay? If if for some reason this doesn't work. Then I understand that Fort White, as a municipality, will have to seek its own solutions. I understand that Columbia County, uh, as a county, will have to seek its own solutions. And again, there will be regional opportunities that will be available. So I'm I'm hopeful and I'm optimistic that y'all can see the plus side, the benefit side. Of instead of, you know, deciding things in Fort White, deciding things in Columbia County, and then having maybe a monthly or quarterly meeting or whatever. That actually, you know, tipping a board supervisor, naming an executive director, getting a staff, getting a headquarters, getting a budget, getting the ball rolling. It's really one of the big, be the way to spend this staff in future. Uh, now, I'm happy to answer any any questions. I wasn't really viewing, you know, tonight's present and modern discussion. As a negotiating session, so it'd be more informational. Um, probably the template that may close closely fit where we are right now. Without considering the other county models, uh, would be Okeechobee, okay? And they give this, and my recollection is, they lived there in ninety four, nineteen ninety four. And initially, that was a collaboration between the city of Okeechobee and the county. And since then, uh, Glade County has come on board, okay? And so again, where we look down that road and we say, where are we going? You know, if we're gonna have this discussion and finalize this agreement, finalize this agreement between the town and the county, I think we also need to look down the road and say, well, what's it gonna look like? If a blank county, I'm not gonna name any names, but if if a blank county or a couple of blank unidentified counties as of tonight. Say, hey, there's, we want to be a part of it, and we can have some cost savings, we can have some economies of scale, and and together we can build this. For the betterment of of our region here in in north central Florida. You know, what does that look like? And what, if anything, will these address in the agreements we finalized? Uh, that's that's what I thought. I'll open it up to questions, comments, or any uh, desired specifics you'd like me to speak on.
I got a question. I got a question, and and you may not be able to speak to this. I'm sure you can, it's to some point or some, and I had this from a Fort White resident, and I understand what they're saying. I get. I get their point, and um. If, what is your experience, let's just say that, you know, it's like set tank regulations and everything else are changed every few years, and they're pretty radical changes. You know, we've got now, less than one acre, you gotta have a twelve thousand dollar set tank, you know, or fifteen, whatever it is. Um, is there a time, and this is a viable question to me for for people that are in Fort White and wondering about this. Is there, i- is it better to wait, and and I I'm. I'm wording this as best I can. Let's just say that the state says one day, three rivers in three years has to have. All those places, either a water, a sewer system, or different set tanks or whatever, you know, that they come down to the point where we're done. Waiting on y'all to do this yourself. You need to do this within a certain number of years, or or there will be these requirements and these other things. And then, does the state typically offer more money or have more incentive for you to do it? Or do they just kind of put it on you to get it done in a quicker time? Has a county ever been caught by something like that when they didn't have a utility? Do you get what I'm trying to ask? Like, does this?
I think I do. Let me try to ask you. Uh, to the best of my knowledge and recollection, I got my Medicare card here, so please keep that in mind. Um, so here in our district, um, money we're allocating. To the St. John's River Water Management District for some subsequent sewer pilot programs. In the Doctor's Lake area, okay? Doctor's Lake, I think many of you may be familiar with the St. John's River area. But Doctor's Lake, um, is basically off of the St. John's River, uh, in um. In Orange Park, and then we also have a part of what we call Doctor's Inlet Swimming and Creek, kind of uh, two twenty. And so it's an important public body of water, um, but it it tends to have algae blue. Because it doesn't circulate as well as it should going back out into the St. John. So, um, so having said that, um, we were asked and tasked. With implementing a subsequent sewer program, okay? Uh, our county board of technical commissioners was very interested in it, which included residents of our town of Orange Park. Um, which is our, you know, south, in the north end of Clay County. Um, and 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 our commissioners had a close eye on what we were doing, and basically, we facilitated a contractor to come in. Okay, behind us. We we bailed in for mine, okay? Now, we were available, we're making available, okay, state grant funds, okay, to the Water Management District for the hookup. Okay, and it was drastically reducing the cost of compliance for the homeowners. It was not mandatory hookup. Uh, our Clay County Utility Authority, which is my my client, I represent them. Did not mandate, and did not attempt to mandate, and candidly, I don't think we have the legal authority to mandate a hookup, okay? But we facilitated it, and by virtue of that, in my opinion, usually we're saving uh, customers. Somewhere in the neighborhood of about ten to twelve thousand dollars over what their cost would have been otherwise. And and that adds up, obviously. Now, now, um, we will be doing that in feeling, and the technology has to adapt to the circumstances. Um, sometimes you're talking about the regular sewer flow, you know, to a main. Sometimes you're talking about essentially a a mini collection station, okay, that we have to link anything to. But you know and I know that the state is trying to get us out of the private set business. Okay, and so that's one of the things that this authority will have to address in your community and and in the region in the future. It will have to help our customers, our consumers, make that transition.
I think my question was a little bit different than that. I understand what you're saying. Is it better to go ahead and start the utility now and, and be ready for that, that strong push by the state? Or is it, I think, I'm asking this for another citizen. Or is it, is it, is it better to just wait until they mandate it? And then more money is given and it's more of an easy, easier transition as far as money? Because, you know, I'm just, that's what I'm kind of what-
Right, let me, I- So, so the way it works right now, Rob, there is a separate sewer program right now. They will fund sewer programs for every set tank to take off, take out and hook sewer. They fund some, they fund grants for that. But now, if we don't do sewer, say, we're in the state. Once DEP, who's over the set tank program now, determines what they're going to require for, uh, septic on the springs or the rivers, whatever. It don't really matter if you have a sewer in place or not. Once they pass that law, you don't have to start, you don't have so long to have your set tank adapted to that system.
So it'd be a tougher process if you don't have something in place that's starting to move toward less set.
Yeah, because if it's two years, if you don't have anything in place, if they mandate that and it's three years down the road before you can put sewer in-
You're rushing.
Well, you know, you know, they, they pass that law, you're going to have to, they're going to have to do that set tank. If you put sewer in three or four years later, you know, like we said a while ago, you don't mandate hookups. So if they've already, if they just spent $12,000, $130,000 on a deacification system for a set tank, they're less likely to want to hook up to your sewer at that point.
Right, right, right. I understand. It's hard to get enough people in there paying bills to be able to pay for them.
Well, like he said, if you do it now, you're saving that customer usually about $12,000 on average.
You still enlighten me about some other things, so I'm glad.
But the city of Lake City right here on 4775, you know, they, uh, they, they just completed a set tank, uh,
Stewie Billard.
Extension down there, which is enhancing the commercial growth part of what have you. And so, you know, these programs are already in place. But I'll simply say this because we had a conversation down there yesterday with the DEP, ex-DEP lobbyist down in Orlando. And it's like I said, you know, you know it's coming. Trash is never going to get cheaper. So you've got to start, like, what are we spending right now, Kevin? On just preparing the sale for the future?
Years.
You know, tens of millions of dollars. And, but we've got 20 something years of capacity, if I'm not mistaken, at this point. But we still are doing our diligence because that little young'un just walked out that door. They're going to have to be faced with it. So you can't kick it down the road. And, you know, it, it's an investment that is, is necessary. We're, we're on top of the spring shit. It, it's never going to get easier. And that's one of the, in my opinion, that's one of the benefits of, you know, the water situation. We've already lived it as commissioners in my short time here. You know, when a system goes to the front, guess what? What kind of commissioners get it? You know, we all know the condition of the Fort White system when it all came to the, you know, it come to this way. It's 100% better, but we all know it still needs better water. That's, 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 that's not even an argument.
And here's the thing, uh, Commissioner, uh, when water go bad, we have to take-
That's right.
My bad.
Uh, every time, every time.
Brian, some of the grants that are in place now for Fort White is taken through a grant.
Yeah, the first one, Connie's usually better, is a 5.2 or 5.3 million. One of those two is for a wastewater treatment plant and approximately 80 connections. And then there's a second one that's, uh, in, in review that's more like 4.5 million. That'll probably bring about 35 more septic to, uh, centralized sewer conversion. And it builds about 50,000 gallon a day treatment plant with that.
Automatically, if I did the calculation right, we're still talking about less than 100 hookups.
Yes.
So for nine million bucks, do the math, you know? Fort White, if I understand correctly, got about 350 people on water system.
Commissioner, just to, to, uh, add one item, you're getting a plant with it too. So it's not just a hook, but you're getting a plant with it that have a little bit more capacity.
Yeah, I understand that, but in reality, it's still about 350.
It's some of that's other grant.
I think what the chairman was asking was, what was the funding source?
Funding source was the state and FDP's administrative. So let's say grant, FDP's administrative, and they require that you have, uh, systems of long-term capital replacement plans and maintenance of the systems. They're very stringent on that, going forward at least.
Tell, answer this question for me. Fort White have those grant for sewer treatment plant?
Yes. The first one's-
That is to the city, County Fort White. Does anything change with an authority where there, that grant was to the County Fort White? Then what red tape we got to go through to get that grant out of?
I don't think, I don't think it's significant. I know from speaking to the program manager, FDP, several months ago, he knows that there's interlocal agreements currently that, you know, the water system is operated by the county and, uh, and has some details in it. And the specifically, and Connie has spoken about this a few times, the, um, the wastewater, there's a high level interlocal agreement between the two entities, but not enough detail in it. So, um, he knows that this is going on, interlocal agreements, that the county operates the existing water plant, looking to operate the wastewater plant, you know, at least that was in the plans. So I don't believe it's something that's insurmountable. And I, I wouldn't probably call it red tape, but it probably does take administrative work to make sure that happens. But I, I don't envision that being an over challenge. Connie, do you think anything different on that?
Yeah. And one thing I'd like to point out about reading of research I've done on it, talking to you, uh, lawyer here, is that we're, we're, we're at the very beginning of, of the race. And, and the neat thing about this is the way I look at it, you know, talking to other commissioners down there this week, getting, the people that are interested, Swanee County, they're, they're drooling to death because they see the big picture so that this is going to be a collective share of cost. That's your first thing. And just like you just hit on, probably the most important thing of this grant and of the point we're trying to make, and Steve sits there in the back, he understands. And also my point is simply this is that, yeah, you got a grant sitting out there, but they're not gonna, they're not gonna start cutting checks until your plan is in place, that your maintenance and what have you is going to be able to support this plan. And as the gentleman on the recording right there says, and he said the other day, and everybody in that room agreed, if anybody in this room thinks that any kind of utility we're going to touch or be a part of in the next 50 years is going to make profit, you're crazy. It ain't going to happen.
No, it's not going to happen.
It ain't going to happen. It's impossible. Them young'uns just walked out that door, it's going to be old people before, there's a dollar made on this. You don't get into utilities to get into the profit business. It doesn't happen. And other municipalities, we're sitting in the middle of one right now that relies on their utility to fund general government over $2 million a year. It don't work, people. It don't work. It, 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 because that's the neat thing about this regional utility. We can prevent that from the beginning, right now for the children and whoever in the future that wants to get into this kind of business. Because if you don't plan now, all it's going to do is be a net, net cost. And you, you know, that's the reason why I got a shop on Mary Road Street. But that's the reason why they can't go down there and spend $6 million because all the water could have gone up a Marion Street and a pipe that big. So the monument company floods six inches every time we get around. But my point is simply, they, you are not making this money and run your government. If there is a dollar left over, then the month's got to go up here to either paper increases, you know, advancements or maintenance in the future. And what the gentleman just said, if you ain't got a plan, Tallahassee ain't writing that check. That's a guaranteed fact. Ain't going to happen.
And, and, and I, I know that there's no money to be made, but in all actualities, like Robbie said, if we can get it in, and, 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 you know, this is all utilities, it's a lot of stuff. But if you can get it in soon enough, when the government says you've got to put in a $12,000 set tank, if we have it on the way and in, before that happens, people can go, I can hook up New City Sewer. Don't have to pay that $12,000. So it isn't a moneymaker for us, but it is a money saver for the taxpayer, you know? Which I, I wish I had it at the river. I had to-
Yeah, I wanted to say, I've been told more than once, Tallahassee. We fund the operation and we don't, I mean, we fund the infrastructure. We don't fund the operation and maintenance. We don't fund that. We'll fund the building of the plant. We'll fund the running of the line. But you have to give us a plan where you can operate and maintain them. We don't, we don't, we don't have grant money for operating and maintaining. Brian, am I right?
Yes, I think, um, yeah, I think that's very important. As time goes on, the costs continue to go up. You know, when you get a brand new plant and what happened to DP, you get a brand new plant for two, three years, five years, you don't need as much.
And, and I'll, and I'll say one thing and I'll, I'll shut up. There's a, there's a sewage plant that was built less than 12 years ago, just north of us up here. And there's been a new one, almost a brother of it, built in White Springs. That's probably under operation, but very, very brand new. Go look at the one north of there. And there's a perfect example of not having a plant in place as to maintain this. I made a bunch of money off of them maintaining that plant now because they better go. So it's good for some people, but, you know, it, it's costing somebody a bunch of money.
Does, does anybody have any more questions for Brady?
I do.
Go ahead, Bill.
Brady?
Brady, you still all right?
One is the advantage to a Fort White resident. Oh, if you still there.
Are you there? Brady, are you still on the, on the phone?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. So you're going to bargain a bit. What is the advantage to the Fort White residents of the authority compared to the way we're doing it now? With the interlocal agreement? What's the advantage to the residents in Fort White?
Well, I mean, my, my, my way of thinking, what's being done now is a temporary solution to a permanent problem. Uh, the permanent problem is you need to create a resilient, sustainable public water supply system, infrastructure, and sanitary sewer treatment and collection infrastructure. In addition, reclaim or injection is going to have to be part of that with the current ecology concerns that we're dealing with, with our bodies of water. So to my way of thinking, I just, I can't wrap my mind around small municipalities having to bite off that type of cost on a long-term basis and run it and maintain it. I just don't see how that's sustainable.
That's to the town, buddy, that's not the residents, right? You're talking about the cost to the town.
Right, and I, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, the, the residents have, have to pay the cost of operating the town and the systems that the town has. So yes, that's, that's my concern. I mean, I, I would be very concerned about living in or moving into a small community that, that had a huge need for future capital infrastructure. Really something motioned for, it's not going to be able to be effectively addressed.
Bill. Brian, elaborate on that a little bit now. Uh, Bill brought up the interlocal that's in place now. It's my understanding that DEP is not satisfied with that interlocal, is that correct?
The wastewater one, they are not satisfied that because it's very broad. It talks about that you intend to do things, but it doesn't talk about a cost. Like right now, the water one has some details of the cost. It doesn't have really any specifics. It's just that, hey, we're going to work together, cooperate on that. It needs to make sure there's elements of the automatic, uh, port of connection policy. What is the capital plan? That you, what is the mechanism to adopt rates and capacity fees and things like that too?
We, it was drafted to meet a grant requirement at the time and it was merely an agreement to agree.
They did something.
So what's the cost?
What?
What's it going to cost the business to maintain and run it? Do you, do you regional utility travels?
No, yeah, from the sewer, County Fort White.
Brian, and you're, and you're, uh-
Slides.
Yeah. You remember the amount?
I mean, oh, you want to go to specific on that wastewater? Or you just want to talk about the wastewater plant?
Yeah.
Yeah, you go to slide number, um, six. Uh, you got to go to four and five, we'll have it, four and five. Um, so four on the right-hand column, um, is, uh, the second right-hand column is, uh, oh, I brought my pointer, what, you got a pointer? So, um, right there, this is Fort White wastewater plant as it was operating in 2024. Of course, it's not going to be 2024. Um, it's, you know, it'll take a couple of years. And then this is the total of the whole system with the existing Ellisville Fort White water. So your revenues are about 120,000 gallons and, uh, the slide before shows that. If you need to, I'll go through all of them. My operations can be a minimum of 240,000 bucks. So your net revenues, that's just, uh, before a penny of capital, a penny of working capital, working capital going down below is you need to be able to, uh, have accounts receivable, accounts payable. And when you're a growing system, you have to have a little bit of margin there. So then you do your renewal replacement, which is, uh, 5% of revenues, usually a bond requirement if you have a debt, which is not enough to really take care of a system. It's okay to take care of the first year or two while it's on a warranty for a sec. And then you have some additional pay-go capital investment here. These two numbers together, 18,000 make, uh, 15% of revenues. A typical utility, and Gray was right, certainly a smaller utility early on, brand new, won't have the ideal authority of revenues going to a long-term capital, uh, to, to handle depreciation because you've got new stuff. But you got to really count on double that over a year of five or 10. So we're, these are very low numbers. It's come out of the box, again, a car, brand new and a warranty. And, and you're negative 150,000 bucks on, uh, on the wastewater system. And then if you go over to the next slide, you can go, this is, um, that numbers, they were relevant to the initial, um, probably seven, eight million dollar type number of the $10 million grants. About 65 hookups, there's about 14, um, vacant lots right now in the initial collection plan. Gives you about 22,000 gallons a day or 23,000 gallons of flow. But what will happen is, um, hopefully there's a little bit more money left over from those two grants. And then we'll have a phase two A parcels and Connie can help me on what roads they are. But, you know, there's an area on the, uh, what do that be? These southeast part that we would like to expand to the second phase, um, and pick up more customers. And what happens there, we add the flow addition, say that's four or five years down the road, you get a little bit of economy scale, not enough, but you get a little bit of economy scale. You get more revenues here, uh, 72,000 expenses, someone did a math right here, I think is about 30,000. So as you grow, you start getting a little bit of economy scale because your revenues coming higher than your incremental expenses. So maybe in five years, that's about an $80,000 in the red. But that's when you start having some challenges where you need capital depreciation. There's a control item will go bad, a switch, you know, your pump stations after 10, 12 years. So this number will get filled up, uh, a capital, oh, excuse me, this is before capital. Cause I got out of order of slides. So that's before capital. That's before a penny of capital, a penny of debt service and any discussion of any sort of, um, distribution or a payment to an entity. So it's going to take a long time, um, probably at least a half a million gallons a day of water, wastewater together to be semi even. And we go through all the slides, we can follow through that. But hopefully that is an answer to the question, yes.
We pretty-
Ronnie, whenever you, you made a mention earlier, you know, Fort White's got a lot to give up on this.
Elaborate on that just for a minute because I, I think I know what you're saying.
The system we've got in, Fort White don't have a lot, as we all know. We, you know, when we first took over, the problem we got ourselves into was the system, when they put the system in 20, 25 years ago, it never was run right. It never did the right thing with the money that were charged. And we, I think rates were not raised 20 years. God, all our rates were low until we come to the table with the water. But when you come to find out, our rates were higher than y'all's rate were, from the can. So, but they still didn't match. We did a, uh, what's that study called that we did? The Crown and Counties that we did study with water rates. We, we did water rates- We, we did a water rate study around the counties, our, our surrounding counties and found out that our rates were way out and way down. We went in and made a period system to raise them. And, um, I, I just think that, you know, not going against what Mr. Grady said, I understand you. You don't make money yet for it. You're putting money back into the water system to save for future years. That's what never happened. They were using it, like you said, they were, they were using.
They didn't have anything to do with water.
Exactly. Not the way you do it, but, um, you know, it's, uh, so, but to us, you know, uh, we don't have a lot. What we do have, we do, we do like it. Appreciate it. We don't, if we want to give it away.
But I, I guess, and, and I don't mean this in a harsh way. I'm, I'm saying it like it is. You ain't got nothing to give away.
Well, that's right.
You know, and I mean, you got this life and data system that is borderline D P problems as this. I mean, my whole point is that in the system is all them red numbers up there prove the point that there's nothing ever going to happen in Fort White in the next 50 years that's going to upset, turn them red numbers back. It's impossible. It, it's mathematics, mathematics. It just ain't going to happen.
And I understand Fort White and I understand the county, it's a big step. It's a big step. And it's, you know, sometimes things you do in government don't affect your right now and they might be a little unpopular. But 30 down, years down the road, somebody got sewer system, you know what I mean? It, it's a good thing you did, you know, it, it. Most of the stuff we do does not benefit everybody tomorrow. It benefits people five and six and 10.
But, but in all reality, y'all know, everyone, or I think y'all do, where it does help. The economic development. And taxes from economic development comes in. That's how you offset with economic development. You know, it's like Ellisville. Ellisville costing us about $360,000 a year to operate the water sewer in Ellisville. Cost was up there. We were receiving a lot more than that from the truck stops and the business itself.
Right.
So what I'm telling Fort White is if you're going to do that for long, which sounds like y'all going to do it, y'all talking about doing it. The sewer system is going to help you with economic development and tax. You're not going to make money off the water sewer, but the water sewer will make you money on your tax in the long run.
Because, I mean, in my mind, Fort White's right for people that live in Gainesville. It's quicker to drive from Fort White to Gainesville than it is from the north side to the south side of Gainesville, really, you know, so. But I understand it's a big move. It's like, it's like an investment in a company. You invest and you're scared to lose, you know, and it, it.
Well, I look at Fort White being a clinic. It, you got all those folks that, that, that works in, in, uh, Jack and Bill that's moving to my clinic. While my clinic is booming, it's the people moving out of Jack and Bill to my clinic. And you'll see that same thing happen with your water, with the infrastructure that you put in place. And, and.
What is the advantage of the authority over the interlocal agreement? I mean, is there more grant money out there if it's a bigger system? I mean, to help build this thing?
It's, it's got, it's got a lot over future.
And it's not run by government. It's run by.
Government, run by a separate board. They can enact.
Chair, if I'm not, it does open up the door for more grant opportunities. Yeah, yeah. I mean, I know that's what everybody's saying.
What, what is, what I mean, what is the advantage of the county in this recording? I see Fort White, I mean, but I don't, oh, the county, y'all, y'all giving up way more than we would be giving up.
Let, let me capture it just as easy, something real simple.
Yeah.
On the operational side of things, when we first started discussing this, I would look at all these. You do not need a wastewater operator all day. You don't need the equipment all day. So even sharing the resource of manpower, equipment and things of that nature, utility opens up that door. That's just an easy example. The overhead cost of running it is significantly lower. So I've been educated on.
I think one of the reasons, and I can't speak for the board. One of the reasons I think the board has previously said that they like it for is because it takes decision-making out of the political realm.
And it's, it's, it's all for the good of the authority. You don't have anybody that has a, you know, worrying about a political pressure or anything of that nature. It's actually authority that has no, you know, no ties to anybody. It's just going to try to do the right.
I feel like that, that would be a disaster. I mean, let me rephrase this question. If, if, to me, putting together a board, what's beneficial, the, the board members that we placed, put in place, like you put in place, and I'm seeing very much like this, what gives an incentive to just hold that position? To me, it sounds more like a H O way of just fall slap in pieces. And you instead of looking for members to fill the spots, to go in there to sit on a board that they're going, man, I have my time, my time up for this crazy thing every month. You go pay them a hundred dollars. It's not, well, I seen the fee, but I mean, who's going to want to go up there for a hundred dollars and go tell two hours of the maintenance? I'm just saying, I don't think it's a paid position. It's, and I've heard of other water authorities falling apart. So I'm going out.
Go ahead, Mr. Grady. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in just to say that, um, I, I hear you. And I, I did notice that in the Okeechobee setup, uh, they've got a couple of vacancies, although it's primarily related to alternate positions, which we were not planning on using. But, you know, in, in our scheme of things, we have a planning committee. Okay. We have a board of community commissioners. We have a planning commission. We have a town council or, or a, uh, a city, a city council. So to me, there's a, the, there's a civic pride aspect of this. Usually you're trying to get people to know something about engineering, something about utility services, something about providing services to consumers, maybe something that, uh, about, uh, land development, maybe something about transportation, something about finance. So you're trying to pick leaders from your community who care about your community and care about one another. And in, in our particular case, we have not had any problem, uh, keeping our authority staff. In fact, we will have times where we have three volunteers, uh, basically, if you will, campaigning to that point. But I, I realize every, every, um, community is different, but I, I certainly hope that, that we would find the same thing. Once we get started and once we go in and make season, it's a professionally run operation and they're part of making their community and they're part of the state better, I, I feel like we will have people who are willing to serve.
Well, it's funny that you, you were talking about Okeechobee that had some vacancies, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Cause I spoke to the mayor of Okeechobee and he told me, cause I asked him the pros and cons of a water authority. And he told me that was one of the, 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 the cons was vacancies on that board that they had to steadily fill. And so.
And, and, um, and I apologize. I don't mean to talk of you. They're a little unusual and I, you know, y'all think about your own experience with governmental bodies. I have not worked with any governmental bodies or even, uh, like board of directors or different organizations or charities where you have an alternate assigned, okay? So, you know, think about your own board of county commissioner, your own, uh, town council. I mean, you typically don't have an alternate assigned to your seat. So when you have the alternate to fill, that makes it a little bit more difficult. But, um, yeah, I think candidly, if you got into a situation and you couldn't fill the board, so I would say amend the interlocal agreement and reduce the size and board supervisory. I think we were proposing, uh, initially a five-member panel. Um, the panel that we use in Clay County is seven and, and typically we don't have a problem with that. Um, but, but, you know, all I would say is, is we need to be open to the reality of the circumstances there in your community.
Question while we're talking about this, about these slides.
What's your question?
Well, on slide number, thank you for numbering the slides. On slide number four, you're talking about Fort White wastewater is losing a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Right?
And, yeah.
Wastewater.
Right.
It's, and it's, it's water and wastewater sewer is the collection system. Wastewater is the whole system. So you need to change the name of this thing. It's water and wastewater sewer. It's the pipes that go through a plant. But that's besides the point. So what I don't understand is Fort White wastewater, which is all based, I guess, these numbers on a brand new plant. You're not charging enough on a brand new plant. You originally, you're going to start to just lose money?
We'd have to go back to the presentation we did a month ago. There's another slide before. You have to have a certain rate structure that's competitive and benchmark. And, and that's a rate structure that's in place. We looked at the expenditure.
I saw that and I understand you guys are pushing this, but.
I'm not pushing.
For white, this is, uh, this is a brand new plant and you're losing money because you're not charging enough. That's what, that's what it is? That's a question.
Financial projections and they're, uh,
You guys.
Chair, just go ahead. Financial projections are a projection. They're as is, are hypothetically, we look at the county standards on it.
Yeah.
So it's a projection and projection of the current rates. If you looked at the slide prior to that we presented last month, I think it was number four now or three, and it shows that. So that's with the rates, with those current rates, you would have a negative number there. And the county subsidizes through other funds, David could correct me. That's how Ellisville water wastewater have negative. And it's very common around the country that municipalities, uh, fund the wastewater water systems to, uh, make them balanced budgets.
And we just raised our sewer rates last month. Uh, which went into effect this month, the commercial accounts in Ellisville, because it was not generating enough rent.
Where would utility get the money and lose that kind of money? That's why I was asking about the grants and stuff. Where, where the utility going to get that?
I want to go with infrastructure. You have to get infrastructure in. You have to have some, you have to have money coming into finance that start with it.
So the county has been fortunate that we've used a lot of grant money, other people's money to fund the infrastructure. However, we do carry debt from when we first put in the system in Ellisville. Uh, we had, uh, what they call state revolving loans. And that costs us more than what we generate. As Commissioner Ford was saying earlier, about $300,000 or something. I don't have it off the top of my head, more than it generates. Why we're trying to raise our rates to catch up. We have viewed the subsidization of the plant as worthwhile because we more than compensate with that in sales taxes, in property taxes, in diesel fuel taxes through the growth and development of the Ellisville area. Do you remember when they put this plant in, which was 2008? Ellisville had an X and S and a little tiny B and B and very little else. The impact of the Dollar General, Burger King, the Loves, the Truck Stops of America, uh, the S and S expanding, B Z B has been tremendous. And it brings in a lot more revenue than we're having to have to subsidize the plant. But if you look at our budget, you'll see there's a transfer from other funds or other revenue sources. So we use, you know, maybe small county coalition money or small county monies or sales tax monies to help subsidize, make us break even.
Our whole utility budget, pretty much, well, 60% of it comes and subsidize from other sources. More than 60, a little more than 60.
And to add, Mr. Consumer Secretary Coon, I think at Fort White Water, Connie can, uh, confirm that using, you know, with the COVID ARPA type money, that some of that money's been used to help to repair things and, and, and that won't be available, unfortunately. No more COVID money will, you know, in future years, but so.
And the town of Fort White did a study with, uh, Rural Water Association. I forget how many years ago it was, that led to the board to pass the resolution that said, we need to raise our rates every single year by either, what was it, 3% or 18%? Because they recognized that it was losing money.
They, that's why everyone made it, manager made it, our last utility meeting is, there's plenty of water flowing when the cheap water's running out.
That's right.
And more cheap water.
I believe that.
Yeah.
But I guess one of our best authorities going to get this money from to fund this.
Well, Bill, the, and, and I don't want to misspeak, but, but the authority, even though, yeah, they're going to be running it, but you know, the revenues coming to the authority from the expansion of growth in Fort White, as an example, in Ellisville, is going to subsidize these numbers that, you know, in order to help pay it.
There's going to be places come from the county.
Yeah. And, and, you know, so I guess what I'm saying is that when the enhancements are done to, with this, uh, say Fort White, uh, we expect that, uh, Swanee County, uh, they're on this, this group, uh, their, their taxes are going to come over here and help pay that debt. That, that, that's not what the structure would be made, uh, made of, I should say. But the operational part of it, uh, and on the professional standpoint, you know, there's a lot of, as the attorney said, there, you know, there, there's so many hidden costs in this business that it's, uh, we just got to, and in Ellisville, David just hit the nail on the head, you know, what we're reading down there. I mean, there's such an enhancement to the fact that the state of Florida is fixing about $40 million down there to enhance it even more so. And, you know, but we, we couldn't afford it. I mean, we need $80 million a day to pay roads that are already paved in Columbia County. So i- it's got a, it's an investment for the return. You know, I, I guess what to say, you know, you put water in the ground fertilizer and hope that a kernel of corn comes out, you know, that is basically what it amounts to.
Chair?
That's right.
I think Grady can, uh, address the issue of, in the proposed interlocal agreement, it talks about the county subsidizing the authority. So to answer your question, where do they get the money from?
Yeah, but, and again, so to, to my way of thinking, and I was a little bit spoiled. And, and Brian can teach us a little bit about how, um, sometimes the experience of a private utility company can be different. But the, the model that Clay County settled, one of the reasons why they did government-owned water and sewer function was, as has already been said this, this evening, to get the politics out of the water and sewer function, okay? The other thing was, in our particular experience, where we were, you know, ending the, the, uh, 1980s and going into the, the 1990s, it, it was pretty clear that there's about to be some transition of some significant private utilities where we were. And it was pretty clear that it would be better to centralize them and have a government-owned, again, if you will, not profit motive, but sustainability, resilient design, uh, resilient operation put in place. So, so having, having settled that, basically you've got to be willing to support the authority getting started, you know, achieving that sustainable level. And, you know, you know, I'm, I'm really an accounting guy, but I kind of want to be an English major when I talk about this authority. I kind of want to say, I, I think we're going to be pretty good here after five or 10 years. I think Brian wants to say, uh, it's going to be longer than that. Okay. And I don't know, the reality, it's going to fell out. Here, here's the thing, folks. I mean, we need a public water supply. We need a public sanitary sewer system that will serve both Fort White and the county, probably other population spots, you know, within the region, okay, with the adjacent counties. It's going to be easier to plan that, design it, finance it, build it, maintain it if we pull resources than if we try to do it each on our own.
For example, what we're looking at now with Swanee County and Hamilton. Baker County is involved, but Baker County has no water sewer right now. So, so what we're looking at right now with Swanee and Hamilton. So, so what we're looking at right now with Swanee and Hamilton is doing an operation and maintenance utility with them right now. So basically all three counties will pay into a, through the utility for operations and maintenance. You have one operator operate all the plants in Swanee County, Columbia County and Hamilton, pay one operator for sewer. So basically each county will figure their percentages, what it's cost to maintain, operate their utilities. It will have one utility working for all three counties. So basically pulling your resources, your materials, you don't have to keep as much material in stock. Trying to get what all three counties using the same material thing, valves, same meter, water meters, you know, we're on the same page. So we can pull our resources and save each county money because twenty counties in the same, but we are, they're just getting started in utilities. Hamilton County just getting started in utility. So hopefully by joining forces, we can save each county a sufficient amount of money by running one utility to do operating and maintenance of all, all the utilities that be through counties.
These numbers are just the way it is. It's not like we're in work shape than all the other utilities ever started up, but I'm, I'm with you. I understand. You know, it's like an investment waiting on return, just like we did with our businesses. We invested hoping we'd make money and we happened to, or we didn't. And that's, that's a, I want everything guaranteed. You can't guarantee. I get, I get the situation. That's called.
And here's the authority. If you guys don't want to be part of an authority, we'll just run the water line to Fort White for immediately end up. And then you own your water from up. We still get you good water and everything you need, you know, and you can charge what you want to for it.
Right now, being a local, y'all running it. So.
But at this point in time, Bill.
Fort White still sets rates.
Right?
Yes. So if the rates need to be adjusted in Fort White, it goes back to the town board, the board to consider.
You don't set the rates.
But you will set the rate. We will set the rate that comes down into the pipe, but you know, too far white a rate in, to the council to take it there.
And the authority, the authority would set.
That's right.
Is there a lot of work to the treatment? Is that, is that a, is that a, like you were talking about Mitch Kirby, uh, you know, it's not a 24 hour day job doing this. With, with their treatment facility down in Fort White, what does it, what does it take?
I defer that Steve, but I think Ren Rickland, Mr. Smith, Bill's question, that's one of the big advantages of sharing resources.
Yeah, that's a daily.
Operate the plant.
That's a daily operation down there.
Because of the condition, correct Steve?
It's not, it's because of the treatment. You know, you got, you got multiple treatment methods down there.
That's my whole point. They're going to have treated water when it gets there. The water system never have a treat.
Water system bypasses that plant.
They don't even need that plant. They just need.
You're talking about when we get that water down there, you're not going to have as much work going on at the treatment plant because probably it would just be like a pump boost. We're going to use the tanks and the pumps. Maybe a little, maybe a little bit of chlorination. So, so you're talking about wiping out all that maintenance and work when we get that water line down. That's a big deal.
Your plant will provide pressure to the water system, make sure that you maintain the pressure you need. And then if the chlorine residual falls below whatever point, you would have a booster pump to increase that chlorine residual.
So, so the daily operation of treatment is going to be gone.
You want to use the carbon.
There needs to be a little bit of testing each day by the operator.
And that's a, that's a huge, that's a good deal.
Well, that water got to be treated somewhere between
treated in Ellisville.
That's a long way to pump water.
By me?
Go ahead.
If necessary, boost your facility of chlorine.
Yeah.
Keep the residual up. And that's really the issue is the longer the pipe run, uh, you lose due to friction and Steve can talk about this much better than I can, you know, some things, but the biggest issue is, does the chlorine stay active? Because at the end of the day, whenever you deliver it to the house, it has to have a certain level of residual chlorine. So if you get to the point where the chlorine is getting too low, you just boost the chlorine.
At the, at the treatment plant, which is not
Also be on the job. Eighteen. There'll also be a spot on, under rotation. Am I correct, Steve?
Yes.
Boosters down eighteen. Yes. At the fire station?
I think so. Yes, there will be one at the fire station. And of course, the one at the plant will keep the chlorinator at the plant. There's no sense getting rid of it there. You know, that's there now. So you'll have a
Something to fuck you guys up.
That way, that way, when it gets there, there's not, there are too many residual, you knock it out.
Water is pretty stable in Ellisville, so seven mile run is nothing. You won't lose.
Usage. So if you know Ellisville, we have to get in line, we have to flush those lines. The reason we have to flush those lines is to keep the water fresh, keep that chlorine residual. You won't have that problem here. Because it'll be going into the plant and being distributed throughout Fort White. But because of seven miles, you just want to be safe and have a couple boosters in case they're needed.
And not a problem, there'll still be a Fort White at that time will be the lines need to be looped.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we need to loop our lines too. So I mean.
And at that last meeting, I think Chair, uh, North Florida showed them, you know, projected loops in Fort White that's going to enable their system and Ellisville.
They have huge state legislature money on that, right? And when they get that good water down there, y'all going to be here, you know, people going to love it. Bad water is a bad deal.
Do you know how far from that right now? Ninety. I mean, there to Interstate seventy-five, six mile. That's, that's a reality. The city pumps that far already.
So to give you an idea, the city's water plant is next to the cottage. It pumps all the way around the city through forty-seven, seventy-five and back up to the west side, which is a much longer run.
Seventy miles of pipe and we never lost any residual when I worked. Yeah, but they usually.
Lot of usage though.
Huge ones. Well, the water, yeah, we have very, there's very few dead ends there, but we still have, I think, seventy-five dead ends that we flush. They flush. I got, we, I retired.
When they built that loop, Steve will tell you, they had pipes over by Lake City Avenue. And a little bit late there. And they found out later they didn't need it anymore. They planned to be able to have boosters just in case.
A nineteen mile pipe, and we have no boosters whatsoever.
So while we've got Grady on the phone, do y'all have any more questions for Grady?
I mean, I've got my answers I needed.
Do y'all have anything else to Grady?
I don't.
Grady, we thank you. Uh, we're turning you loose at this time. I think we're Yes, you enjoy yourself. Thank you.
You're good.
Okay.
We've been talking about the water. Last meeting that I had, that I was at, y'all said that y'all would have an answer in thirty days about the contract. Have y'all gotten that answer yet?
We got out the bid.
Got it to be.
Out to be.
Out to be.
Rebid.
It doesn't supposed to be.
It had to be a rebid.
Bill, I just asked that question today. Mid-December.
That water line is a big deal.
Listen, I will pour out water. Well, they've been getting it for twenty-five years now. It's not considered.
That's been a goal of mine since I got elected.
And I will, I believe you.
And I will state it.
Rocky was the
Our residents in Fort White deserve good water.
They do.
Everybody going to get it.
I'm sorry, Bill. Real quick, once the bids come in, just give everybody a real quick oversight, you know, because we hear it all the time. Well, this guy's in here and does it. They like my roof starting to
There's a process. Once the bids come in, you organize, enter the team of rankings, make sure there are no errors in mission. And we kept going to be a C C page, which I have a contract and a bid will go in together. You then get a fourteen metal day notice proceed. We send the contract back forth. If contractors are busy, they play the game, open contract for a day or three, got to handle them. I'm going to get the contract back, which time you issuing fourteen day notice proceed. We cannot mandate contracts start on day one. That's probably the biggest misconception. You give them X amount of days to do the job. You go up to one, secure, they might wait to day seven or a hundred fifty day job on impetuous and timely fashion. That's the only governing tool you have. So all we can do is get it out immediately, get it back, get the B O C C approved, get the contracts exchanged, issue a notice proceed and start contract. How long do they have to do it for the contract? I do not call up somebody. I can tell you tomorrow it's a mall.
Now, the good news is
I might know that.
With the town's assistance, we were able to buy most of the pipe. So you're not going to have a supply chain issue getting material put in the
And he bought it.
Two hundred and seventy days, Bill. Five, two hundred and seventy days of contract. That's why the contract, contract time is two seventy seven. It will start, we will issue what we're going to notice proceed upon exchange of contract. The contract time will start. Once again, they got two hundred and seventy days to do it. They might start day two hundred up.
That's up to them. Got to be done.
Two seventy, that day it's going to be done. Once it's done, then you got to test it.
And just for, all kind of weather days, rain days, recovery days, you got to be real careful.
You trying to arrange your cookout day.
Celebration down there.
They did in the big city and spread out there, let the kid.
It's such a I'm, I'm here for the citizens. We tell about in January of twenty-five.
Again, the design is there'll be a master meter at the town limits. But the line will run all the way to the plant.
Yeah.
Then from your plant, get distributed throughout your community.
Any more questions? I don't. We're going to do a public comment if anybody has anything. And
Are you any comment cards?
There's public comment.
Yeah, I knew you had comic cards.
Well, they didn't nobody that I have. Well, nobody got anything you want to say? I got a question. Stand up written in.
Yeah, you can stand up and give it to your name if you will. Everybody can see.
Question is, um, I know economy to scale, and there was a lot of talk earlier, but the town of Fort White had boundaries. So what was the thought process of expanding to get your economy? Are you talking about annexing, annexing properties outside of city limits now? Is it the, is it the town already planted X amount of lot? So has anybody looked at that? Any question?
Look at it from what perspective?
As far as how you're going to get your economy to scale, if you've only got X amount of property that you can get new clients in. And I would assume now, maybe a long assumption, but I know the county has voted not to force any hookup. Would that also be something that the town would be doing or are you going to force your residents to hook up?
Good work.
I think the I think the great that they have now have mandatory hookups by not operating that right?
They have, you have to have a specific policy. And not just typically everywhere, but specifically here, the conversation we had with the F T P was that any sub tank that needed to be replaced or significantly repaired will not be allowed. So if someone has a sub tank immediately, D E P was not pushing to have a mandatory hookup day one, but you'd never be able to replace or significantly repair or modify it.
But if they want to, if they want to get the hookup done at the time of the installation, for no cause, they have to do it at that time.
Yeah, that's, and that's believable. You know, our conversations are probably more cognitive at the town of White. That was the theory. It's certainly a more cost advantage for the customer to hook up then, um, while the work's getting done. Otherwise, it'll in the future.
It'll be a no policy to cover for that time.
And that's the way the town is, what I understand, preparing to do it.
In terms of the water line, development could occur anywhere along that water. From Ellisville, I just want.
Right. Well, I think what Mr. King is saying, I understand what the question was. He's saying the development of Fort White, the city limits. We just said that the, that number that was up there was based on, we're willing to take that loss because of economic growth that you gain off of, like you're doing in Ellisville. But Fort White's a small
But if you do a utility, the utility won't be restricted just to the town of Fort White. It'll be, it can extend outside.
Right, but it's too bright. Yeah. Right. I agree, but I guess we're talking about the economic growth. I think Mr. King, right? What you're talking about, yeah. Talking about the economic growth inside the city limits. How would Fort White ever grow, even though we got the water and sewer, that's what we said from the, when the conversation got going was you got to have water and sewer to get the growth. But how much are we really going to grow if we can't expand our county lines? You know, we'll start, we're going to start approaching on y'all if we start expanding our county lines because y'all were out there.
Let me put it this way. City of Lake City was not as big as it is today. It has annexed because it's extended utilities. It only limits Fort White's annexation under annexation laws is being contiguous and the town having to want to annex. So there's nothing
It happens all the time.
It prohibit you from annexing as long as you comply with the annexation law. So any questions on the town growing its footprint is a town to call. It's not a county call.
And now the right now in the city, Lake City is basically a voluntary annexation.
Right. I'll give you a perfect example.
If we want the city annex, we surely
And one of the things that the city does also, if you annex, you got one rate. If you don't, you got a different rate. So if a person wants water outside of the city limit, if they not willing to annex, they get a higher rate than they do if they annex.
So the perfect example is you know where the ball fields are at basketball. There's somebody that wants to build a subdivision across the street. They're large subdivision. So the city annexed it. That was their right to do so as long as the property owner agreed to.
And it's contiguous.
And it's contiguous.
So you're looking at a town that's going to grow. You know, it has to.
There, there's areas
Right. They extend their utilities outside into the counties. The city does have utilities out in the county.
Yeah, but, but what I'm saying, you keep saying contiguous, but, but
That's because we've allowed it.
We've allowed it not to be contiguous. What he calls his enclaves that Oh, but you were the enclave you're talking about. So city, the city built Target Distribution Center. You notice the city limits kind of goes way up, gum swamp road and around, and there's one point where it's a single point that is contiguous back there. But they, to get target distribution in that area in the city, they had to connect it to the city. When they were looking to go to the airport, they started connecting and annexing farm line to try and get outfits. They never quite got out there. But it does have to, in one way or another, touch the city limits because Florida does not allow what they call satellite annexation.
City, y'all's airport, that's in the county.
Well, that's what they're trying to bring in contiguous, but to what Ron said earlier, he's exactly right because it wasn't always that way, correct? Forty-four years. Done the other way. Hundred percent. That's why all the enclaves.
Yeah, you're not supposed to have enclaves. It's free of them. We've never complained. So they
Working with them, hoping that, you know, they're, they can build their revenues to do whatever that
That answer your question?
Anybody else have a comment?
Chair, before, make sure we don't adjourn because I know there's some visitors back here that's here for something other than Fort White. Water authorities or what have you. I don't want John to go home.
John, you want to
I got a question for y'all while we're all here. Um, so with the water authority, if we agree, we don't agree. Are we concerned about these interlocals going away between the are we concerned about these interlokal going away between the town?
No, that's all done. That's done. That don't have any. To do with the authority.
Never have been.
The sorry, it's a yes or no to y'all.
So appreciate that. Second, and something that's been concerning me for a little bit, um, with some of this maybe animosity we had in here, um, we know the school board wants to get rid of the fort. That's in Fort White. Um, we reached out and inquired about that and maybe turning that into a town office, so on and so forth. Y'all know what we're dealing with. We got a small area. How do y'all feel about that? Because I'm under the impression from some of the members I've spoke to on the school board that the county commissioners are actively going after that building. Y'all.
I know what you're talking about, but I think. I think. Can you clarify that? Um, the school district approached us about the fort. And when we looked at it and we did tour it, constitutional law, we've always included space for the town of Fort White, increase your space. Because you know how limited space you currently have in your town at all. Uh, the minute that the town said we'd rather own it ourselves, I don't think the county particularly has an issue with that. We, not involved, because the school district.
Y'all are welcome to it. We don't have to.
It's in your town.
That's all we wanted to know.
There was a big confusion. We didn't go and ask for it, had it in the town, and as we all know, it's in the town means a lot to our town and a lot of residents.
The only reason we even entertained the idea, they came to, because they came to us and we recognized the importance of trying to keep that building, keeping it right.
So y'all are gonna recommend to the school board that it goes to the county.
I don't know if you remember or not, but we brought it to the town council and asked y'all if y'all would be interested.
I agree, and then, then, but a lot of things, money and the water.
And you know what?
I just wanted to be clear.
You know that thing, like you're saying, the money and the water, the worth of. That's why, that's why this meeting was so important. You know, stuff that we hear and y'all hear, a lot of times, that's just somebody running their mouth.
Well, I mean, I heard.
And now we know.
The county was gonna cancel interlocal agreements if we didn't bring it to this water authority.
I know, I don't know, but I've never said it and I never.
It's fine. I don't want to argue.
I'll, I'll, but I'll come here later. I said, you're gonna be blamed for not trading the agreement. That's exactly what.
But the.
That's all I want. The only thing on the interlocal agreements was this meeting. Although we've had this meeting.
That's why at the beginning, I said, you can say yes or no to the, yes, no to anything. We're not, we can't force anybody to do anything, you know.
I understand. Thanks a lot to get to the south end, but we're still here.
You got it now, you know. Whatever y'all want, you want, and what you don't, you don't.
It travels both ways.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, it can travel both ways.
Oh, that's the past. Well, I don't really know, I mean, I know they say it travels both ways, but we don't really, we're not really holding anything that y'all want. Really. We can't say anything to us. We can make it happen if we want to, but we can't.
Ronnie, the numbers that the gentleman shared and the attorney, I mean, I, I, I would assume and I would hope for the constituents from the South Columbia that came, it, it's clear that, and, and I don't mean it in derogative way, it's just that, and I understand, you know, you don't want to give up that quarter acre land, but, but, but my whole point is, is I think the point we've brought out in a lot clearer manner tonight is that, you know, the whole end game here is like Bill Boy said, uh, we want good water from Fort White, and we want to get it there the most economical way you possibly can. And going about it the way we're doing it today as if we, how we are producing water, that, that's not, that's not the answer for the future of Fort White to have good quality.
Hey, we've been on board with this for a long, long time. Someone here lately that this happened.
We on the route, right on now.
Let's go.
Yeah, we're on the way.
Y'all just will stay. I guess they just adjourned, but I, you know, I just, you know, I just want the council to understand there is an issue in our little district. And, uh, some people are putting balloons up in the air so people can ooh and ah, and then fly over to our neighbors and we were in a drought and, and it's dry and we have sparkles going everywhere, you know, in our area. So rather than, uh, there was no permitting involved, there was nothing. They just are going to do it tomorrow night. Found it through my granddaughter's friend from school, so. We need a motion.
Yes.
What, what they're talking about is those lanterns, like that you, you probably skilled, they have the little lanterns, they, they put a little uh, full source in the bottom of it that heats it up. Flies up in the air and wind blows it and it goes wherever it goes and it lands. Well, those have been all in other circumstances, have started fires in different areas. There's a company that wanted to come in and do a, a, a big thing this, this coming weekend, Saturday, have a big the racetrack, racetrack road. Uh, they were wanting to do this, saying that, you know, they're, they're wanting to have a thousand balloons, like, like on less thousand lantern release all at one time in the area and, oh, go, they're, they're, they were charging, wanting to charge money for tickets and all to go to this event between thirty to sixty dollars. Uh, they wanted, you know, food and, and vans out there and a lot of this stuff. But there was never anything, anything brought to the county about asking for any kind of special use permit or anything through the, the fire department asking about any kind of permitting or actually any questions asked whatsoever about whether they could do this or could not do this. Uh, talked with Joel today, we've done a lot of research, I've done a lot of research on this. I had Lance, my, my assistant chief, and my, my secretary doing a lot. What we've come up with is their, Duval County has already told them they can't do it over there. That's why this is actually, the name of it is, uh, lighting Jacksonville or, or something to that effect. It's because they can't do it over there, Duval County won't allow it, so they're coming over here to do it. Duval, Nassau and St. John's already has stuff in place where they, they won't allow it because it's unsafe. NFPA, which is the National Fire Protection Association, which governs pretty much the fire protection system for our requirements for the whole United States, uh, has a whole little thing they put out about them, and the very last line in there says sky lantern should not be used under any circumstances. Well, there's also, to, to be able to shut them down, to stop it, since, uh, there is actual no county regulation, I, I think it says that, that there's, there's not a whole lot of regulation on a lot of this. What there is though, is Florida statute seven ninety-one point oh two that explains, uh, well, it says accept this hearing offer provided is unlawful for any person, firm or co-partnership or corporation to offer for sale, it's exposed for sale, sell at retail or use or explode any fireworks. You know, and then the seven ninety-one point, uh, Florida statute seven ninety-one point over one section four, definition A is of fireworks, and part of that definition, it says the type of balloons which require fire underneath to propel them is, is classified as fireworks. So all of that being said, that refers down to the Florida Fire, Fire Prevention Code. Well, the Florida Fire Prevention Code, uh, NF is by NFPA is NFPA one ten point one point six to twenty twenty-four version of the code says authority having jurisdictions shall have authority to prohibit any or all open flame scandals and open recreational and fires or other sources of ignition or it's having special regulations on use of any form of fire or smoking material with this, with circumstances make such conditions hazardous. By statute, the authority having jurisdiction for Columbia County is me as being the fire chief. And in referring with people that live in the area, the farm land and all, contacted also Florida Forest Service, and they are, they don't have authority to stop it, but they stand with us, saying it, it is very dangerous, they would really not like to have it done and all. So by all saying all of that, what has happened today is Joel, uh, went to contact the owner of the, the racetrack down there, which lives in Oak Allen. Wasn't able to get ahold of him and start with, the owner actually ended up showing up at Joel's office. Uh, Joel explained to him and all that couldn't be done. Didn't go through any kind of process, didn't, you know, try to get our, our approval, the county's approval or anything like that. Uh, the man wasn't happy about it, but seemed okay, uh. So Joel was going to send him an official letter tonight to his stuff and all saying that. About, he, Joel said that a little while later, fifteen, twenty minutes later, the man come back with a, a, another gentleman with him that wanted to know if they tethered them, tied string to all of these balloons so that they could only go a certain height. Would that be okay? Uh, my opinion, that's still not okay, because if you're talking about trying to release a thousand or more of these at one time, all of them on a little string, that's.
You don't have to convince me anymore about this.
Say no, and if you have more. Regulation says they can't have live music without a permit.
So all of that being said, if they start to do it this weekend, we have the authority to, with, with sheriff's office help, shut them down at that moment, right then, have government say, no, it's done, everybody else clear, it's shut down. I just want to know. We need to know that we have y'all's backing.
You got it.
Let's do the motion.
We do our motion. I move that we we back the sheriff's office and the fire department in stopping rooms with fire under, being set off in the air. And we, and I, and I'm, go ahead, second.
We, in other words, we just need to, to follow our farm marshal order and not let this go on.
What's happening? Yes. I know you're good.
Do we need to read, do we need to reread the motion?
I can't wait. And, and, and not only do we need to do that, we need to make an ordinance at some point.
So we have a motion.
I'm gonna say one thing before we leave. Uh, I, I called Jeff at twelve forty-seven and, and, uh, they, 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 uh, I've worked with Joel also, they really got, they, they made it happen. And then, uh, me and Jeff broke up the phone calls, and it looks like during the whole, what we do, he went and did what he did, he's got stacks of papers and we can't do what we. I mean.
What bothers me is Jackson said, no, they run over here.
Yeah.
I call him, yeah. They know it's a hazard.
Exactly. For a short period.
Well, it's a place for everything, if it's on China on top of. Big fields somewhere where you can see things, you know, I wouldn't want to limit the, the whole, around a hundred acre field area in that. Go up at one time, that's it.
These are the things that you seen on that movie hangover where they turn off.
We slow fire all over, you know, we can't.
Is that ready to adjourn?
Yeah.